Members of the committee, we're going to call the committee that holds the order. Rather weighty agenda here this evening, this afternoon, so get right to work here. Motion for the Doc and the Agenda is required.
Move.
Technics. Over the paper. No delegations, minutes, or departmental reports. So we have a number of staff reports. So first of all, at page five, we have a community works fund and financial plan report for receipt.
Receipt.
Technics. And receipt then, over the paper. Questions carried. As was the number of reports this afternoon, we have this offered by our Director of Finance, and he's provided a summary of the gas tax allocations for the next number of years. At this point in time, I'll give the Director of Finance the opportunity to make any further comments, or otherwise answer any questions the council may have. And you're looking for IC recommendation whatsoever. First of all, on an overview basis, anything further to add?
Nothing to add. As the report states, the federal government through UDCN transfers gas tax funds to us. We expected to receive about $3.5 million over the 10-year life of the program. The money will stop coming to us after 2014, and we have until March 2015 to spend the We've got some allocations in there that there won't be money for if we use the funds and apply them to all the sidewalk and bike lane projects that are in the draft financial plan. So if that occurs, then we have to look at the allocations we previously made to garbage and sewer outflow reductions, and perhaps remove those tentative allocations, because to date, we don't actually have any projects to suggest to recommend spending tomorrow.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Counselor Tom Grant.
So we can alter this at any time between now and 2014, right?
Correct.
So this was a wish list that was put together, because I suggest that we spend some time reviewing this and looking at these projects in conjunction with our current strategic plan for 2012, 2014.
Yes, of course, this is what's been allocated to this point, as far as the draft financial plan goes, and we'll get to the draft financial plan afterwards later this afternoon. And allocations, of course, are done on a year-to-year basis, a great subject with you. I got two names here, both Counselor Ken Grant.
So during our strategic planning, we talked about mapping of greenways, trails, and in particular northeast woods. And I'm not sure, would that qualify for gas tax money spending? Or, you know, I can make the case, but does it hold up in court, I guess, is the question for why we could do that.
Well, I'd suggest that you look at the outcome reporting framework, pages 11 through 14 of your agenda.
Yep.
And see if there's anything that matches.
Well, I guess my question would be, is mapping going to reduce your greenhouse gases? No, but of course it will if more people start using them. So I guess I can make that case, if I had to, I could find a way to make it work.
Ultimately, it's the town's requirement to report out on those things and to match up. Of course, you can see I'm within the criteria on that. Certainly a debatable subject, as we find with many of these things. Counselor Price, I think you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Just on the two items, the $300,000 for the garbage that we're supposed to remove, my question on that was, getting so close to that pilot organics program with the regional district, but what was the thought on those money, right? We can't use them for operations, so it would be for containers, or what?
It has to be for capital projects that we own. So for instance, if we buy a bunch of containers and distribute them to households, that wouldn't qualify, because we don't own them anymore once we give them away, right? So retention of ownership is an issue. The $300,000 was originally contemplated, and we actually approached the regional district and said, well, it'd be a few of capital costs for building a facility, so we'd be willing to take an equity ship. So in other words, partner with us, so we become a part owner, and then we wait out and build it. At the time, the regional, which was, I believe, three and a half years ago, the regional district said us fairly clearly that, no, don't worry, this will be funded out of solid waste if this is what we do. So really, the allocation has remained, because no one's rescinded it, but we really don't have a place for it in that regard. And I agree with you that I hope we are getting close to the regional district doing a pilot on organics.
Okay. Counselor Price, you have something else?
Yeah, and just on the $400,000 for the INI. So I understand that if we do some INI work, we have potential cost savings with our sewer flows. So have we not been able to identify where those may be done? Is that the...
A lot of our problem is that it's not necessarily lining that will be the solution to the problem. A lot of the time, it's connections or some pumps that are going into the sanitary sewer line that really should be connected to storm drains. And lining the sewer mains per se isn't necessarily going to cause a significant reduction in flows. We continue to monitor and crack seal and do the usual things. I guess the next step is to have a really significant program of smoke testing and dye testing, looking for flows that aren't really sewer, that are getting into the sewer system.
Okay. Counselor Price, then, again.
Great, thank you, and thank you for the overview. Great questions, and I'm glad to hear that that won't affect the organic collection, that taking this money out of budget won't have an impact on whether we go ahead with that. And just further to the sewer system, do we have any money available to look at those points where we're getting storm water into the system? Because that's a very costly event if we're using our sewer plants when we don't need to be, it's overtaxing it. Is there anything that is in the pipeline that we can be dealing with that?
So if you turn to page 83 of your agenda, you'll see that the sewer fund has a $122,650 surplus. If you turn to the next two pages, you'll see that the sewer capital reserve, in addition to that, sewer enterprise reserve has $200,000 at December 31, 2011, and there's as well a sewer DCC reserve with $196,000. So I think there are adequate funds if we need to address the capital needs of the sewer system.
Great, thank you. And just one last point, further to Counselor Ken Grant's comment, I'd just like to say that in the northeast woods, the Friends of Comox Lazo Forest Reserve are working on a trail network, and we did get a grant from the regional district to GPS it, whatever the initials are, and to produce a map at the end of it. Yes.
Great. All right, Counselor Ken, you're next.
Yes, following up on Counselor Grant's point, maybe I'm missing something in regards to our work on the strategic plan, but I don't see, or I'm not seeing this in the financial plan, and again, perhaps it just needs further explanation, something like a developing community walkways linking the Marina Downtown Waterfront, et cetera. And I don't see it here in the financial plan, at least worded in those terms. So an example of our work in the strategic plan, that's not evident here in the financial plan. What am I missing there?
Well, for instance, I structured the financial plan to follow the transportation study. So for instance, a key foot lane from the downtown to other places might be along Bowford Avenue. There's a sidewalk that runs basically from Port Augusta to the library, to continue on to, along Bowford, from Jane to Stewart. You'll see that in the 2015 capital plan, Bowford, Jane to Stewart, and that includes bike lane, widening the road, and sidewalk, and resurfacing. So you'll find it on page, what, 2015? So you'll find it on page 275 of the agenda, under sidewalks, Bowford, Jane to Stewart, $218,705.
See, you have any...
Oh, sir.
Yes. In terms of work plans and how those kinds of projects will proceed?
Yes, and I think we haven't put the label of the community walkway, but there's a lot of the segments that I think would comprise that are in, along with the Director of Finance's memo on gas tax funds with the Cottonwood Greenway that's also included in there. There's a sidewalk work along Church that would happen that could form part of that. So I think that the pieces of the puzzle are there, we just haven't put the label on.
And if you turn to pages 79, 80, 79 actually, you'll see that the work on, there's major works on Val Morl, scheduled for 2017. So again, there are, from Torrance all the way through along Val Morl to Port Augusta and Comox Avenue, there is a sidewalk already. You can walk on a sidewalk all the way from the circle all the way out to Torrance Road along Val Morl. But you have to switch sides on a couple of places. And so this would basically twin the sidewalks all the way along.
Counselor Tom Grant? Something, Counselor McKinnon, should we...
Well, this is just following up on what Counselor McKinnon said. I mean, we have a strategic plan that we're hoping to implement in the next year or two, and you're talking, one of his, one of Counselor McKinnon's major things on his wish list was this, you know, walkway, and you're saying it's in the plan in 2017? Well, this is a couple of elections before that.
The reason that it's there and not soon, we could put the sidewalk in now, but in 2017, the transportation study says we're supposed to widen Bowford. So if we put the sidewalk in and come back in five years and rip it out, that might not be productive. So we really have to look at all the works on Val Morl, and I believe there's either storm drains, or yeah, there's storm drains, and there might also be sewer issues there to do with our capacity. We've got to look at the capacity of our sewer system, particularly in the core of the town, and since a lot of the sewer drains down, basically through the downtown to get to the Jane Street lift station, we really have to figure out where the ballmarks are and what sort of infrastructure is required before we start doing very much to some of those roads. We do not want to build something and rip it out a few years later.
Some of the elements of our strategic plan, we need a bit of planning design work, obviously, to determine what it is that that community walkway would look like. Elements that I think are in the financial plan, the five-year capital plan, and of course, they will have to be brought together to, in a bit of a, I guess, a project summary, to say what it is that we're going to be doing. Because we say develop a community walkway linking Marina Downtown Waterfront Parks, that will already exist in some places and not in others. And so it will be a matter of determining what it is that we're looking at, and then how does that fit into our financial plan, which is, of course, the challenge over here to make, to deal with.
I just think that, I mean, the traffic boulevard study shouldn't, you know, we should try and marry our strategic plan in with it. The traffic study shouldn't be the whole thing that's driving our financial plan.
Oh, I'm sure it won't.
Right? I mean, there's got to be a marriage there somewhere. And I mean, there's a lot of stuff on this, on this financial plan that could be funded between now, 2012 and 2014, that we didn't even discuss. I mean, we never even talked about spending $90,000 on painting bike lanes in our strategic plan. You know, a lot of this stuff, that's what I mean, we should revisit this with a view to both the traffic study and our strategic plan, and we haven't done that. So I'm just asking that you spend some time reviewing this.
Well, absolutely, that's part of the process here this afternoon, and will ensue, I'm sure, over the next number of weeks. Our strategic plan also harkens to the fiscal balance and infrastructure asset management issues, and the piece that we do have is the transportation study, which does talk about maintaining our roads and sidewalks, and also adding to those elements of our community as part of our core services. So, you know, it's all got to mesh out together, we have to work through. Of course, we'll be talking about planning application timelines and OCP implementation as well. And the financial plan is essentially, excuse the pun, where the rubber hits the road. And we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and figure out how we can get, perhaps not all of it done, but certainly a good portion of it done, and we're not unique in any respect of communities across the province, and tackling basic infrastructure is going to be a huge part of our plan, as well as, as you say, the wish list items that we'd like to get done as part of our three-year term.
Can I just get some clarification on what streetlight conversion is? I assume there's some power savings there, or something? I'm just, I think you told us this before, but I can't remember what that actually is.
Yeah, roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, so roughly half of the streetlights in Comox are on kind of freestanding poles, as opposed to being attached to VC hydro poles. The ones in the freestanding poles are ours, and we've got five or seven test lamps that we replaced a year and a bit ago, to switch to magnetic induction from high-pressure sodium? Did I get that right? And the thought is that by switching all of them to magnetic induction, we'll get some fairly significant hydro savings. The technology is evolving. There are LED now lights, but the last time we looked and discussed this, which was a year ago, the CSA had not yet approved any of those designs. And so the only one that Glenn could find that was CSA-approved was a magnetic induction design. As technology changes, it could be that by the time we get to, the time when we're going to replace this, that there's something even better.
Okay.
Thanks.
One of the advantages apart from hydro savings is that we would change the lamp head, it would become a full cutoff, and so we'd get more light coming down and less scattering away.
Yeah, that's the next question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Director of Staff on the summary here, or your receipt? We don't necessarily have to send allocations at this time, we can leave that for further discussion as the budget process ensues. And as commented, we can see how all comes out in the end. So perhaps we leave that decision for now, unless council wants to do so, and then we'll look at the whole package when we get to it. And in the last year, as we reached the end of the budget process, we did allocate some gas tax monies to various projects, to try to balance the budget as well. So that may give us some latitude there, not a whole lot. So unless council wishes to rescind those allocations, we can leave them for the moment and move on to the next item. Yes, Counselor Price.
Just on that, there were a couple of sidewalk proposals that, to me, looked like they would have otherwise been, it seemed to by development, such as the Anderson-Linhardt, so we know there's a vacant lot in the corner of Anderson and Guthrie. And then the other one is Comox Ave, it's another from Lake Key to Stewart Street, and we know that there's the development on the corner of Stewart Street, so...
In fact, the costing for the one that runs from Comox Key to Stewart is just for our the western way portion of that. We've assumed the developer will build the portion that's immediately in front of their property, and that this would not be built until such time as the development is proceeding.
Okay. Oh, the whole piece would not be done until...
Right, there's no point us putting our chunk in until the whole thing's been done. When a contractor is doing, we would probably sit down with the developer and arrange for us to contribute, or them to contribute, but basically, we join the two bits together and get it all done at once.
And the same with the Anderson one, was that the thought?
I think we're further out from development on that one. I don't, I know that there's interest on that site, the corner north, sorry, the southeast corner of Guthrie and Anderson. I know that there is interest, but I don't think that there's any development applications pending. Mark?
That's correct.
Okay, so there, we have a choice, when we do the resurfacing, the second lift of Guthrie, do we include the sidewalk and the full design lift or not? And if the developer isn't present at that point in time or ready to go, we're just going to have to eat those costs. It is DCC-funded, and the DCC, the road DCCs, will be levied on any new development there.
Counselor Price?
Yes, and I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see that it is suggested that the Cottonwood Lane Greenway is scheduled, should this go through, for 2012. I know that's very well supported, and there is offers of community help with it, and may help defer the cost. And certainly, the 2014, the Lazo Greenway, that's something that people have been really eager to see, given that Lazo is such a dangerous and increasingly busy road. It will make a big difference.
Okay. So anything further at this time?
Well, just before we move on, I'm a little reluctant to just let this lie, because this, are these projects driving the capital plan? Or is our strategic plan driving the capital plan? What's going on? Because if we leave these projects in here, and staff just proceed with the financial plan, you know, we're not taking, you know, the strategic plan is not driving this financial plan. I don't know where this came from, I guess these are old wish lists or something.
Is that, I think, our current financial plan from, well, it's five years?
Well, some of us have been all been around for five years, so...
Well, I think from last year's budget.
I just, I move that we, that we take some time and look at these projects in conjunction with our strategic plan, before we have this driving the financial plan forward.
Okay, well, I don't know about that as a motion, because I believe we'll be discussing the financial plan this afternoon and subsequent meetings, and we're going to be looking at it all together.
Yeah, but I'm just...
All we're doing at this point is just receiving the memo. It's just information. And it's, you know, our strategic plan leads into budget, our budget leads into work plan, and it goes around and around each year. So this is all information that staff are bringing to us, as part of the background to the financial plan, and what we do, and ultimately is council's decision, as how that financial plan for 2012, 2016 goes forward.
Well, I guess what upsets me the most is that, you know, we spend hours and hours and hours on the strategic plan. We've got this gas tax money that we've got allocated, and we've even got a memo saying that there's not even enough money in it to fund what we want to do, there's a shortfall. And two weeks ago, out of the blue, we decided to spend $100,000 on gas tax money on water meters over the next three or four years. And that, all of a sudden, is magically incorporated in our financial plan so quickly, I didn't even, you know, it just happens. You know, when staff wants something, it gets incorporated in the financial plan. When council does its strategic plan, you know, we have to almost beg to get some of the things incorporated into the financial plan. I just don't understand how this is all happening. Like, two weeks ago, Patty comes up with a motion that we come up with $25,000 a year gas tax money for water meters. Dang, it's in here.
That is a direction of council, that council resolved.
I know, but we spent months on the strategic plan, and there's projects in here that, they're not even on the radar screen in here.
Some of those projects...
2017 for...
Some of those, no, no, no. Let's characterize these things, I think, in the way that we understand them to be as part of a process as we go through a budget. And our budget is going to take the information from the strategic plan, it's going to take the information from the transportation study. We have been discussing in the last number of meetings, gas tax funds, so we now have that information. The allocations that are in there are from the previous version of the financial plan, and when this council adopts its new financial plan by the middle of May, it will have presumably allocations that will have met the will of council at that time. So this process, as I said, even regarding the water meter, finding this is not cast in stone until such time as council adopts after three readings the financial plan. So it's an iterative process, and it's a building block approach, and we're here to get this information, and we're going to obviously have a lot of work to do to finalize a budget that everyone can be happy with, or, you know, it's, there's nothing untoward about receiving this.
I'm not saying that there's anything untoward, it just seems to me that, you know, if there's things that staff like, they get driven into this financial plan pretty darn quick. If there's things in the strategic plan that may prove difficult, or may require some imagination, or some shuffling of funds, that they just kind of fall off the map. But, you know, if we wanted to find a half a million dollars for water meters, I'm sure by next week, it would be in here so quickly that...
If council directed that, I'm sure that staff would implement.
Okay.
It's only based on council decisions, so we make decisions here. Yes.
Yeah, and I have to say, I have a great discomfort about treating staff in this way, and particularly as they're not in a position to answer any of this, they don't have the liberty as we do to put our hands up, so...
Not treating staff in any way.
And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I got the impression that this list came from, in part, from the transportation study.
Yes.
Is that correct? Which was part of the official community plan, which was a publicly driven process. And I just have to say, I, you know, I was delighted to see some of these, you know, particularly the greenways and the linkages, because that's one of the things we really talked about, is how we can link the community up. And so it may not be the absolute list, and there may be ones we want to change, but, you know, I think, you know, certainly for somebody who's at the table, very, very new, I think it's a very good starting point to see, you know, a list of suggestions, and that's what I certainly take it as.
Yeah, no, the allocations are reflective of what we currently have, and of course, can be changed, subject to council's will.
So at what point would we look at this list and make changes, if not now?
It would be as we go through the financial plan.
And would that be later tonight?
It'd probably be later tonight, and even in subsequent meetings.
Okay, because there's a few things on here that I don't think fit very well.
This is just, this is reporting out on what's been allocated.
And as long as we can have that discussion, of course, later tonight, then...
Or even the next meeting.
Then maybe not.
We may not get through all this budget in final form, and certainly, we're going to try to provide some direction to staff. And all of what we do here at this council table is what staff will include within the plan, and it's only through council resolution that that happens. So I encourage everyone to be willing to have input on that basis, and to work our way through it. It's not going to be easy, but we'll get there. In fact, we have to get there by the middle of May. So I think we should move on, unless there's any further. Counselor Price, you have your hand up?
Basically, that's what I said, I think in all fairness to staff, we need to, if there's something that we don't want, we don't want $90,000 in bike lane painting, then we should put up our hand and say we don't want it.
But that'll be part of the financial plan.
And give staff direction.
Yeah. Okay. It's in there from previous direction.
That's my point, I'm sure we're going to do that later tonight, then I'm good with that.
Yes, of course. So we'll move on, and I will leave the allocations as they are for a moment, but subject to the financial plan discussion, which we'll have. So at page 15, we are here to receive, for information purposes, the transportation study.
Receive.
Okay.
Technics.
Receive then, all over the paper. And those, please, pay. So again, our Director of Finance has provided this information in collaboration with our city town engineer and public work staff, and they have summarized for us the findings of that transportation study. And again, for receipt, is there anything further the Director of Finance or the engineer would like to add at this time?
If you turn to page 17, you'll see that this is the first of four tables that come out of the transportation study, that basically split the road improvements into four groups, zero over, over the next five years, over the subsequent five years, and then the next five years, and the final five years. So there's a 20-year program. You'll see that the top half, the top two tables are basically resurfacing projects. And then down below, we get road widening, bicycle lane painting, shared bicycle lane, sidewalks, intersection upgrades, bus stop upgrades.
So basically, the top half is, is resurfacing. He calls it road upgrades, but it's really resurfacing. What I think of as an upgrade is something new, bigger, better, different. And so those projects are shown down below. And what, all, all we've done is, is we've included years, you'll see I've handwritten in the years that those appear in the, the projects appear in the capital plan, so you can go over. If you see something, it's level 2017, you can find it on the list of 2017 projects. You also note that even though this was supposed to be in year 025, we've put some of it out into 2017 and 2018, because there's a pretty significant amount of capital expenditure there. And so we've had to spread it out over time a little bit more than the transportation study contemplated. And to help you see what's out beyond the five years of the five-year plan, 2017 and 2018 capital projects lists are thrown in with the, the other capital projects in the, in the budget package. It won't be part of our adopted bylaw, but it gives you an idea that, that we're, we're not trying to skew things in those five years by putting two, a bunch of projects in, or the other side by, by pulling a bunch out. You'll see that the level of capital expenditure continues, and, and in fact, escalates up to 2016. All right, so this information is for further comments, and again, the background information to a legislative process, so we can certainly address any questions at this time? Yes, Counselor Price?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate it, and it's hard on the eyes, maybe the first sheet, if we get it back, it would be, it's an aging process, I'm afraid. And I certainly liked the last paragraph, when you suggest that, you know, if council wants to see the condition of the roads that you're proposing to reconstruct, I'd certainly be very happy to, to go on the tour, that that's a, that's a suggestion that I think they have...
I haven't reached that yet, but that may be something we can do. And I'll just note, when we do get to the capital plan, that for a number of years now, staff have included the age of the roads that are referenced in the, in the capital plan, as far as the draft goes, in terms of someone dating back to the 50s and 60s, so that's also illustrated across, across our age. So we've received this information, and it's good to have, and I think the reason why it's smaller print is to make the numbers look small.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor?
I was just wondering, and I may be jumping the gun here a little bit, but is there any reason why we wouldn't move the next item, Northeastwood Star Management Plan, up?
Would you like to vary the agenda?
Vary the agenda?
Sure.
So half our crowd is here for that, so...
Oh, that's fair.
I would make that motion.
As, as long as we're finished with...
Oh, sorry.
Any questions on the transportation study at the moment, or here? All right, so varying the agenda then, item D to be moved ahead of the financial plan, that's a great idea. But we're going to make the fire chief wait here for the rescue services.
Well, we could vary that too, if you want.
Ah, you serve the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so on varying the agenda, all is in favor. Motion's carried. All right, so this, for a moment, turns our focus to a groundwater management plan that staff have been working with the proponents, on terms of reference, and staff have brought this forward with the recommendations shown on page 87. And we can certainly proceed with the basis of motion to have those recommendations approved, and we can have discussion, or would you like to have any further questions? Oh, and Counselor Swift, please.
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest at this time.
Great, thank you.
Did you want to receive this first, or go straight to the recommendations?
Well, the, I guess we've essentially, the recommendation...
Hi.
The terms of reference were approved, is somebody cared at all to move that?
I moved that.
Second.
Through the second. Discussion on the terms of reference? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. And the second recommendation, that staff be directed to develop and implement a cost recovery method for this?
Move.
Through the second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
All of the paper?
Yeah, I'll move recommendation three as well.
Second that.
Through the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. And no further discussion or motions coming out of that? We can bring Counselor Swift back.
There's lots of riveting discussion.
I'll begin later.
It's riveting.
All right, so that was done. That's done, now we'll come back to receive then of the first complete draft, starting at page 21 of the 2012-2016 financial plan.
On receipt?
On receipt then, all in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, so back to you, Director of Finance, a very comprehensive report. I must say, not all good news, but we'll have to tackle these issues as we go. So I'll turn it over to you for any further discussion and comments you wish to make at this time. Uh, no additional comments on, on this, Your Worship, it's too detailed to try and recap verbally, so I'll just... Would you, just for the sake of, those are still left in the audience here, highlight how page 29 works? Okay, so page 29 of the agenda is, is a multi-year roll-up of our budget. The top section, which I've labeled A, shows the departmental expenses. These are what we think of as our core expenses. So if, if, if there hasn't been a change in a level of service, or a staffing level, or reserve contribution, then it shows up in, in this area. The next section down below it, and, and before I move on, there's roughly $11 million a year in those core expenses. That's, that's today, right? That's 2011 and 2012. So then, in the next section, we have a variety of proposed increases to the, to the core services. For instance, a new RCMP officer starting April 2013. Well, the cumulative cost of that across the five years of the plan would be $411,000, and there's, there's a whole list of, of those potential changes. Think of those as, as requests for change, some of which you've seen before, the RCMP staffing issues you saw in last year's financial plan, that was identified as an addition to the core then, because it would start in 2013, you're seeing it again this year. So across the, the five years of the financial plan, these total a little over $2 million. As well, there are the capital expenditures. Those typically, that's, that's line C, typically about $1 million a year is funded from general revenues. Well, to deal with the road network, we're increasing that in this financial plan. So you'll see that there's fairly substantial capital expenditures coming out of general revenues each and every year. But we have other sources of revenue we brought from our reserves, we get grants, and so the general fund expenditures, not the sewer and water, but everything else, the general fund capital expenditures across the five years vary from a little over $3 million to just over $3.8 million a year. And then the rest has to, that, that total, the core plus the additions plus the capital, it all has to be funded. Some of our revenue is for property taxes, and then we have other sources of revenue, provincial unconditional grants, payments of lieu of tax, user fees, parcel taxes, and of course, property taxes. So those are outlined down below, and there's a residual that we have to, have to fund. You'll note later on in the, in the, in the budget documents on page three of the agenda, that we also are carrying a surplus of 1.0, nearly 1.39. We have, no, sorry, nearly 1.59. We started out at $314,000 in 2011. We added 1.16 million in last year, and so we now have $1,479,000. So that'll be applied, can be applied towards this, these expenditures. So just coming back to line, or part A, I guess, if you will, of the core, expenditures across the five-year plan, that's, looks like just over $1 million? You added all those changes together? The proposed increases to core operations? No, no, sorry, just under A, just before you get to that, I'm just looking at the little triangle there. Yeah, the delta, it's about 1.1 million, a little over that. Our 2011 budget was 10.7 million, and by 2016, we're looking at 11.8 million. And then the proposed increases to core operations, you say add up to about $2 million? Yes, $2 million, the total is $2,163,032 across the financial plan. About 2.2, yeah. And then your capital, five-year capital, which we'll be spending, I'm sure, a lot of time on here discussing, is whatever those add up to. 16 plus 9. And remember, this is just the general fund, there's also sewer and water projects. Right, okay. So combined across the years, we're, we're over, we're over $19 million. Thank you. All right, just wanted to highlight that part of your report, because I think it puts it in context all on one page, refers to lots of elements to it that are covered in your, your memo. And so council, I mean, I should say, staff is looking for a specific direction in any or all of these funds to provide direction to revise this financial plan, which doesn't balance at the current time, and we'd have to do some work to bring it down to a level that we're going to be able to deliver.
So I think with all the roadwork that we're doing, a number that I would feel more comfortable with would be somewhere around the 2.5% range, based on the fact that we're doing a lot of that roadwork, I think would be a, a number that would be a little more palatable. But when I look at our capital plan on page 75 and page 76, down on sidewalks, we have Beaufort to Jane Place, we have $218,000 in there. On the next page, we have Robb Avenue, Pritchard, $832,000. So if you total that up, it's over $1 million in sidewalks that are coming out of general revenue. And that's, I assume, because we're not sure whether the gas tax revenue is going to still be there.
Right.
Seems to me that if we knock those off the plan, it would help lower our budget if we get the gas tax renewed, of course, they can always come back on. But the reality is, if we don't get the gas tax or some other form of funding for those, we're probably not going to be doing them anyway. So that may help us out with our plan somewhat.
Are you referring in 2015?
I'm sure in 2015, you see the...
Sidewalks, Beaufort, Jane.
Sidewalks, Beaufort, Jane, and then in 2016, Robb, Anderton, Pritchard, which is another 832, it comes to $1,050,000, $845,000, if I did my math right.
So...
So I guess I'm looking for comment on that, whether that makes sense or not.
Just before you get to that, your first comment of 2.5, I just wanted to get clarity on that. Are you talking from a, a bottom-line approach, so that after all is said and done, when the, when the tax bill is determined, the average house goes up 2.5%, including water, sewer, garbage, and taxes, or are you just talking about taxes at this time?
I'm probably just thinking you look at taxes at this time, although less would be better.
Yeah. Utilities, of course, as you know, we've dealt with, so those will have an impact.
And I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, the road improvements are something that I've thought need to be addressed for some time now, and it's nice to see that we're doing that. And I think it's a rationale that the public can appreciate. I think that people would really like to see no increase in their taxes this year of all years, but, you know, to do some of those things is going to be difficult. So I think that if we can rationalize it with really concrete projects that we've got, and I think the roads is probably a good one, then, you know, we may get some flexibility on that from the, from the taxpayers.
And even that's full.
Yeah, that's, that's my take on it, anyway.
Okay, Counselor, talk.
Well, rather than, you know, taking an important project like, like Beaufort, for instance, from Jane to Stewart, that road is heavily used by pedestrians, and there is no sidewalk on there. I mean, if, and that's been identified, I assume, by Boulevard, as been a project. So why don't we recognize that in our, in our financial plan as a project suitable to use gas tax money for? And take some of these, you know, when we're talking about rejigging some of these projects, let's use some of, you know, identify some of the existing gas tax money for important projects like that. That one just happens to be one, I mean, I drive down Beaufort a lot, and there's a lot of pedestrians on that road, and you think, think of how much it's used in Nautical Days and Philbury, I mean, it's a major connector between the two parts, constantly.
Yeah, I'm just simply looking at the numbers. If we want to rejig it somehow, that, that's fine. What I'm looking for is some direction to say if that's going to actually really have a significant impact on our budget if we do that.
I'll ask staff to comment on that. CAO or Director of Finance on that question? Your Worship, no objection, council finale, feed gas tax money to any project it likes. What I'd suggest, though, is that as we move through the discussion this afternoon, if we could have some motions, that would, that would provide clarity to staff. I mean, I think, yeah, that may be a motion that we would wish to make. I think the question is, though, what impact would that have, if it's taken out of the financial plan? Entirely, that's one question. I think that Counselor can...
Yeah, that, that's the question. You know, I, I don't know what kind of impact that has, so...
Okay, our, our property taxes are currently about, between $6 and $7 million. So 1% increase or decrease to property taxes, and yields between $16,000 and $70,000. So if we take a $200,000 project and say that we're being funded from another source, then that's essentially, you found a way to reduce the potential tax increase by 3%. Speaking in general terms.
But it's in the future, it's in 2015, so that's not going to have an impact on...
It's not going to be quite that large, because there's a certain compounding effect. Now, the effect of a, a project like Robb, where the sidewalk was budgeted at $832,000, is pretty significant. Okay. All right, I mean, we, we probably should discuss, perhaps even before we get to capital, although we could certainly start with capital, we should probably look at these proposed increases to core operations, because those are significant as well. Acknowledging capital is also very significant. So we could tackle them as a suggestion, let's talk about policing, for example, that would be one topic that we could cover, and see if we want to adjust that or refer that in any way. We've been talking a little bit about that in the past, and there's obviously a commitment that council had made previously to, instead of adding one officer per four years, to do it every five years, and so that deferred the new officer till 2013. So the longer you push that out, the less impact there is on the plan from an operational point of view. So that's, that's certainly worth discussing, and we can't do a whole lot about the new provincial RCMP contract, except refuse to sign it in general police force, but that would cost a lot. And then there's, of course, the civilian support element there, but certainly the bigger ticket item on that is, over the five-year plan, is $411,000 currently. If that's the will of council to change that allocation or that timeframe, we could certainly do that. There's a possibility of dealing with some of the operational differences.
Over the years, we haven't, we haven't been getting a full complement of RCMP officers anywhere, have we?
We often have one or so officers of the 11 who are not, for one reason or another, in their post. There may have been a transfer that hasn't been filled yet, there may be somebody who's going to leave. The exception was, I guess, two years ago, when, leading up to the Olympics, the detachment was suddenly at full capacity, and in fact, Inspector Gray said they were slightly over capacity, they had a few more officers than they had efficient positions for. Yeah, we have to budget for what we've allocated, which is, how many officers? Yeah, we have to budget for what we've allocated, which is, how many officers has he...
11.4 at this point in time.
So, it's really 11.6.
Is there a... So, 11.6.
Thank you. Um, so, I mean, if we want to look at that and, and make a decision on whether we feel we need to, to add a police officer next to equal or not, uh, that's certainly subject to council discretion, yes?
How much control do we have over whether we fund another officer?
That's entirely within our control.
Okay.
That's really the main way we control costs right now, other than through the new contract, which turns out two-year opt-out provision, but, um, you know, the number of officers that we fund determines exactly how much we pay, and of course, those costs go up on a annual basis. So, that's our, that's our commitment. Yes?
It would seem to me that, um, our town has not grown much in the last two years, probably not as much as it normally would, and I don't foresee that, that our town is going to grow much, so I wonder if there actually is a need to add an officer at this point. You know, it's not like, uh, the real estate market's going crazy, people are, you know, people are flocking into town, we're, we're in a bit of a downward time, and, um, I wonder if we actually need to do that.
Well, policing, uh, of course, some people's perception is, is in a public lens, everyone's perception is an important part of our public safety, and, and we have seen reductions of crime rates, uh, we've seen information on that recently. Of course, had quarterly updates from our, our retired inspector, I'm sure we can continue to get them from issues that across the board affect all of us. The 11 officers that we fund, of course, don't all just work in Comox, they work in the Comox Valley, so it is a bit of a regional approach as well. City of Corning funds close to 30 officers, so now they do have a bit of funding help from the casino, uh, gaming source that they have allocated, some of the cost from that, which we don't have. So, you know, certainly that's a possibility that council could, could address, and leave it to, leave the financial plan without that increment. Yes?
Well, our 2012 budget is not calling for an increase in...
Correct. It's 2013, 14, 15, 16, so I'm looking at the whole plan. I mean, we, we don't have to deal with it necessarily this year, but it's certainly something that...
But we are showing quite a substantial increase in the RCMP, both through, uh, I guess part of it is going to be the new contract.
Yeah, the new contract affects us a little bit this year, and then the next few years. Uh, and then, uh, policing, you're right, does not affect us unless and until we add the officer and the civilian support member. So that's why it is shown in the financial plan over years 2013 to 16. So, we, we could change our practice, and we could also defer it for...
Well, it's hard to tell, because if we're going to add, I mean, you're asked, I guess, what we're being asked to do here is decide whether we're going to need a police officer in 2013, and how would we know?
Well, how did council know when they talked about adding one every four years?
Well, we just, you know...
And then changed every five.
Yeah.
I mean, as the community grows, uh, yeah, and, you know, it's, it's crystal ball gazing, we seem to get good service from those that we do fund, and the others that Corning and other places fund. Um, so the question is, do we need to deal with that at this juncture, or leave it till next year? Uh, just suggesting it might be something we need to look at, uh, in order to balance the financial plan, because it is an operational increase that will show up in our five-year plan unless we take it out.
But, you know, you, you look at this, and, and we're budgeting about $200,000 more for police this year over actual of last year.
Oh, you're looking at, we're talking there.
And, and the only difference, I mean, the additional costs for the new RCMP contract are only $12,000.
Yeah, and I think that there is increments built within the existing contract for wage increases and so on.
Yes, the cost of off, of per officer is, is going up about 4,000. Going by memory here, the government will, uh, mentions it, I think it goes from 98 to 102, so it's at times 11.1 officers. And last year, the actual included a, a $60,834 refund from the RCMP, um, refunding us for and overcharged the year before in 2010. Uh, that often happens, is that after year end, about June, they'll send us a, a billing or credit for the prior year adjustment, when they've completed their calculation of actual officer costs, and, uh, and double-check their staffing levels through the year.
Okay. So, are there any, yes, further questions or comments, or perhaps even a motion?
Well, it's still $200,000 more, and, uh... $200,000 more in the budget from actual of last year, and I...
No, I think it's 1574 to 166.
No, that was budgeted last year, and going on the actual last year.
Well, that's probably to do with, uh, shortfalls in the staffing complement, things like that.
Yeah, there was another, uh, shortfall in the civilian, uh, support staff, they didn't spend all the money they'd been allocated. So if you, if you compare budget to budget, right, we're, uh, we're budgeting 12,000 more for support staff, uh, basically, uh, a little less than $50,000 increase for the RCMP officers. Again, that's $4,000 per officer. We're not counting on any, uh, credit back from the RCMP this year. Overtime is up by $4,000. Uh, accommodation costs, that's the cost of their building, uh, and we've based it, the 63,000 is based on their estimate for this year. It seems to float from year to year, and I, I don't always know why, it seems to go up and then down, and, um, basically, I, we budgeted 7,000 more. We budgeted more for the city of Courtney for their, uh, guards and, and computer support, partly because we were over budget last year. And then we've got fairly similar, um, budgets to last year for slight increases for, um, our contributions for auxiliary police, citizens on patrol, private security patrols, and community justice. Probably if we want to trim, the, the one that's probably most, uh, accessible in terms of being able to, to cut some money from is, uh, security patrols, because for the last two years, we've been using about half of what we've budgeted.
Okay. Okay, anything specific, uh, council question?
I, I'm just had a, a question on, um, just as a background. What's the RCMP recommending that, I'm sure it's way over...
More.
...offering, so I just kind of...
Well, CAO has more history here than me, and I know that, uh, we generally would like to see more officers funded, and, uh, and they provided a rationale for it a number of years ago, they went through the crime analyst, uh, discussion, and we did fund some of that, and, uh...
We funded a portion of the DOG as well.
The DOG, yeah.
And, uh, so that, their, their increase, there is always an ask, in every year, that they would prefer to see, uh, the number of members increase, as well as the number of support staff to, to go along with it.
This, this debate is, uh, going on across the center, definitely, with a number of things that I've read about policing costs, whether they're municipal, provincial, or in this case, the federal policing, so, I mean, it's, it's an issue that we have a limited impact on in terms of the number of officers, so, um, there's no magic answer to it, other than that's what we had in our previous, uh, financial plan, and whether we want to win that for this one.
Well, if I'm reading this right and, and taking this through my head correctly, if we were to take the one officer from 2013 and move that to 2014, we're not really having that big of an impact on our financial plan by doing that, I mean, I don't think you could just...
Save about 114,000, because the 2016 months are...
Well, of course, yeah, oh, cool, yeah, okay.
Just move everything, one call to the right.
Right, so that's, okay, so it might have a bit, bit of an impact, but, I mean, you can't not hire more police officers forever either, I mean, I think you...
True.
You've got one year, in my opinion.
We already deferred once, so the question is, will you want to...
Do we want to do it again?
We deferred it last year.
Yes.
Well, I, you know, just going back to a comment that Councilor Grant made earlier, you know, we're not looking for a huge increase in our population over the next couple of years, because we just don't have any, any land to, to move anybody on, so I would move that we moved that, uh, that new, that additional RCMP officer off to 2014, and rejig the 2012 budget, and remove $8,000 from it, and that could easily come just from the security patrols, who have, if the, uh, financial officer would like to, you know, rejig that however he can. So that would bring that, the total requisition down to, of 1.63...
1.63.
$1,630,000.
Oh, you're talking about the...
If we take, if we remove $8,000 out of that budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, CAO?
Could I suggest that if, if you move the officer out one year, that you also...
Yes.
Move the civilian support staff out one year.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all clear on that, and that's been seconded? Councilor Grant?
And just on the security patrols, you are saying $8,000 per year over the plan, so a $40,000, like 8,000 out each year, somewhere?
Well, actually, my motion was, I wanted to remove $8,000 from the plan, so if the, if the financial, chief financial officer felt that that was an obvious place to do it, then I was giving him that latitude, the discretion to do that.
Are you thinking 8,000 a year, or 8,000 one time?
8,000 a year.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yes, and we're 4,000 for the five.
Okay, everyone clear on that, then?
Clear, Mike.
Okay, so, that's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Staff, you're okay with that? Okay. In terms of clarity, uh, all those in favor? Both motions, please. Anything further on policing, or we can move on to the next category, which is building and inspection? If there's any comments on that, that's not scheduled to start till 2013, and we hope that there's more building permit activity.
Where, where do you judge?
I'm under, uh, proposing increases to core operations and memo page 23. It's just a little policing on, I'm, I'm working off page 29. And then it says, other protection building inspection. So this is to do with, uh, increase of case relief.
Okay, so what page is that on in the, uh, agenda?
Page 13. Well, sorry, page 23 on the agenda. And in terms of the budget detail...
Page 13.
Page 13 of the budget, which is page 43.
It's just page 48, it's something else.
Okay.
Right, Councilor Grant?
We have in the, uh, in the plan for this year, $4,100 for relief, and if you go back to the, uh, staff memo, I'm, is, is that, uh, we didn't use any relief last year because the, the building permit activity wasn't very strong, and I don't think, uh, this stuff up, uh, most of the development is going to come up, uh, Pritchard Road, and that's not going to hit us this summer, so I can't imagine why, with the amount of building activity, or lack of building activity we have in the town, that we need $4,100 this year in relief. I can see perhaps in future years, but I think this year, we should be able to handle this.
That's a budget item that's in the plan, obviously it's been there before, any comments? Okay, come on. See you?
No, I think that if, um, we can cut that.
Okay, so, taking it out from 2012, $4,100, is there, that's been moved, and is it seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, any motions, please. All right, is that, that's probably it for that one. The greenhouse gas emissions, um, again, working off page 29 of the, of the agenda, and also page 23, the memo, um, refers to the offsets on GHG's under the Climate Action Plan for Public Works, please prepare your generation. So I don't, this has come up.
Excuse me, this is kind of frustrating, where, where in the financial plan details are we now? Why don't we work off the detailed plan?
Oh, that's, uh, certainly one approach we can take. I've been working off what are called the proposed increases to core operations on the categories outlined on the, uh, page 29, and, and certainly if you wanted to go back to the, the departmental budgets and, and figure out what else is relevant. I think it lays out quite nicely, and we can certainly cover off anything that we've missed, and I'm just going based on the information in the memo that sort of explains it.
Page 15 of the detailed document.
That was 48. Yeah, I mean, we've got fleet, we've got public works, we've got garbage, general recreation. But these are all related to the greenhouse gas emissions, uh, that we talked about in the last little while here, so, uh, they do naturally kind of go with that. But, uh, it's your, to your pleasure, however you should do it. As a council.
What is happening in other municipalities, and the provincial government as a whole with this, uh, climate action charter? Is it being followed, or, I mean, is it...
I believe your, your regional district budget has gone in.
Well, I know, it's, but, there's, we don't know where we're going to buy these carbon credits from, and, you know, are we going to develop them ourselves? What are we doing?
And I, I think that discussion is still going, I think the province has been trying to promote Civic Carbon Trust as one source that, that could receive these, but there's, there's a move afoot amongst many of the local governments that, you know, it's, it's, these are municipal dollars, or local government dollars, that should stay within the local government, and so that, you know, we're, we're looking at accruing these, but not necessarily contributing them, and working with the province to develop our own ability and, and projects that would, that would be helpful.
So we're not, we're not going to run out and start buying carbon credits on some sniffing home market somewhere?
No way.
No, I hope so. $50,000 across the five-year plan is what would be accruing, correct? And we do have to budget for it, that's our commitment under the charter, if I have to.
So that meets our commitment under the Climate Action Charter, so we're keeping that money locally, and if this whole thing collapses, then we still have that money for our, for efficiencies.
Yes, and it also maintains our eligibility for the carbon tax rates that we've started receiving. Anything further on that?
Just a quick question, are there any guidelines, is the province looking at supporting local government, developing local carbon credits?
I think everything's on the table.
Okay.
And don't get Jimmy Gallas talking about blue carbon.
I like that you pressed, no, this is amazing.
All right, so, that deals with that. Now, um, the next one I have on the memo and on the, the overall sheet, page 29, is planning, uh, and there's two items there. I have a detail on that, of course, it's under the planning by page 28 of the details, and on page 23 of the memo. So, we have two items there, um, additional staffing to address backlog and applications, one time $27,000, and then additional planning studies, again, a one-time $63,000, a minute. Detail on that is, I've got on page 3, 23, on memo, and our planner is, of course, here, to answer any questions or offer any further comments.
Any sort of quick question?
Go ahead.
Um, just how, why is it a one-off? Is it a contract?
A lot of square planner.
It would be a, some contract to, to...
Additional, it could be a mixture of contract, student, um, and, um, temporary part-time.
Great, and this is to enable the timelines to be shortened for processing applications?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I know that in our strategic plan, we talked about, you know, streamlining the process, and I was hoping we were going to do that, that there was going to be some internal changes, other than just budgetary changes.
Yes, and we're speaking...
Are we still working on that?
Yes.
There's internal changes, we're going to do things to streamline it, much as...
So, one of the things that we had, um, previously, um, out for, um, as a study, was reviewing our procedures by law.
Yeah.
So we would do that internally, so that additional resource would then also be used to review our procedures by law, create new procedures by law, identify where we can streamline, and then also increase our, what am I going to say, outreach to the development community in terms of guides on how to do different applications.
So if we spend $20,000, $27,000 getting rid of this backlog, and in conjunction with that, we streamline our process, then we shouldn't have to worry about having to spend $27,000 next year, because there won't be a backlog, right?
That is correct.
We will have got rid of the backlog and streamlined our processes, so now we should be able to just be able to bang them all...
That's why, yeah, one time, I mean, a, part of this would also be in terms of a new way of looking at development, is we suddenly, if we suddenly see a, a big hit, like, I mean, a lot of these applications, they're, they're like, six months out... they're late six months out. So you can see pretty much in advance if you're going to have another backlog coming in to the system, just in terms of when the application. So then what I would envision is being able to come forward to council and say, okay, now we've got a train coming at us in terms of there's a spike in the market or something like that, we've got a train coming at us. What would you like us to do? If you want to maintain our processing times, we may need additional resources. Or would you like us to?
But you also have additional revenues coming in, right?
Yes, but we don't, we cannot offset our costs. They're a small portion of our costs. But we would deal with that as it comes? Yes. With a council number? Yeah. All right, anything further? Yes, councillor Pledge?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate staff considering this option, this method, because certainly we know if we bring in a permanent staff member, then there are all sorts of additional costs. And whether the work is there or not, they are on the payroll. So I think this has been very creative of, you know, it's been happening this year. New names on some of our planning reports, and yeah, thank you for doing that. Continue to look at all sorts of options.
Okay. All right, so nothing further on that. We can move on to the next category. I don't know, on page twenty-four of the memo, and then on recreation, the overall category. There is an item in there for the offset of the natural gas, which we already talked about. But then there's staffing, well, there's staffing increases as well as item for heating system needs. So we can open those for discussion, our director of recreation is here. And any comments further to that, which can be directed through the.
Yeah, please, councillor.
Well, maybe if I can get our director of finance and recreation just to comment on these and give us more background, and also talk about the revenue side. I know that's covered in the memo, but I do know that those revenues have increased. And I guess there's a comment in there about our recovery rate, but it didn't say what that was, so. Do you have any idea of this memo that that is?
The recovery rate that we're presently looking at is about sixty-six percent.
That's excellent. I mean, most communities hope for fifty percent. So that's, for those to staff.
Your worship, the key for me is on page twenty-seven of the agenda. Jim provided me a summary of what the average monthly cash receipts are at the rec center. Now, understand that months when there's program registration, they tend to spike up dramatically. But if you look at the average over a year from two thousand and five, it was just over forty-two thousand. The last two years, ninety-eight thousand dollars. And we're really a victim of our own success. The new wing has brought in a lot of people to the rec center, and the new exercise equipment. It's bigger, it's better, it's shinier, but now we've got to look after it, program it, and deliver services to keep those customers happy.
Councillor Pledge?
And I just have to say, I've heard a high degree of satisfaction with the facility. People are actually very excited about it and haven't the single negative.
Just pardon me. All right, so any further comments on the recreation departmental increases there? Yes, that's a question.
On the heating system, the hundred thousand, can we consider that under gas tariffs?
That's a meat cost. So the short answer is.
And you'll note that staff are looking some ways to reduce that cost. I believe the CEO told me that the nearby curricular school has a similar type system, and we're hoping to work with them. It requires expertise that isn't necessarily available in the community, so I will perhaps work with them on a maintenance program. I don't think. There you go. Man, overall. Okay, parks. We have a couple of items there under parks, converting to nine-month parks into twelve-months and now we're on nine-month parks in 2013 across the plan. Our parks superintendent is here. I don't know if you have any further comments at this time, other than it is noted that you believe that you do need additional staffing to look after public spaces that were, of course, added to over the last few years. Anything further?
The only other thing I'd like to add is we've got an aging workforce, and a lot of us are approaching that kind of target age at the same time. So a lot of wear and tear on the bodies out there, so it's starting to reflect now as we gain ground and slow down a little bit.
All right. Any further on that? Seeing none, oh, sorry, councillor.
Yeah, just increasing the parksmen from nine to twelve months. Again, I'm very new to council. I imagine you might have requested that before in past years, or is this a new need?
This is a relatively new need to give us more flexibility and coverage in the winter months. We're finding now that our winter demands are increasing dramatically, both in part of assisting with snow removal and the odd time that we do get snow. But when we don't have snow, we're finding that things that we should be tending to are falling behind. Also, at that time of year, we encourage our full-time members to take their vacation because our busier months are during the obvious times, during the spring, summer, and fall. So with, as people within the organization, as they gain more years in their tenure, they also gain more holiday time. And three of the staff and myself, we tend to block out our time during the winter. And so it gives us additional relief to cover. And God forbid somebody fall ill or become sick, which happens from time to time. They also have some built-in coverage. But our work demands alone, independent of coverage, holidays, or whatever, warrant the addition.
Thank you. Any further on that? Similarly, under maintenance, although it's going beyond, towards the end of the term of this financial plan, identifying beneath another tradesman in 2016. So similar comment, I'm sure, around the age of workforce and workload?
This could be viewed, is going to, I'm viewing this in part to succession planning for senior tradesmen as well. These, this is going to be fairly close to the target date where he's retiring. And to introduce a new body at that time, I think will be beneficial. And then we can reevaluate the demands at that time. But we're in the position now that we're finding with the age of our infrastructure, the demands are increasing. We've been floating with two tradesmen forever, and I think we could, the town could do well by having an additional person.
Okay, thank you for that. Further on that? Still under your bailiwick, some extent, although this is mainly to do with reserves. Marina capital reserves increases provided by the director of finance, as well as the contributions to the waterfront development reserve coming out of our strategic plan discussion, and of course, our marina rate establishment. So I don't know if there's any more comments on that, director of finance? No? Any questions from, yes?
Well, I'm just wondering why we're putting money into a waterfront development reserve fund. You know, I thought we made it quite clear in our strategic plan that this was a top priority as part of, you know, the marina enhancement and the downtown revitalization, revitalization of the downtown. And I think it's sort of a key to that, and just to raise the marina rates, to put money into a capital reserve fund is not what I think we were intending. I think we wanted to see something move forward and, you know, let's get some action on this immediately. And, you know, we should, you know, put money into developing a plan, and then once we have a plan, we put a cost figure to it, and we start to figure out where, how and when we're going to fund this. But that's what I thought we were going to be doing in the immediate future, not raising marina rates to put money into a reserve fund, so.
Okay, CEO?
Well, then, I must have misinterpreted what was stated because my understanding was that we were going to put these funds into reserve, into a reserve fund, until that plan was formulated. And utilizing, you know, we have some study money in our financial plan. We're going to try and access other grant sources to not only develop a plan, but look at funding it. But this was going to be, our financial plan would then show a contribution from the town that we could rely on when we apply for grants as well. So it's not, it's not just.
When I see it going over the, you know, the life of the financial plan, to me, it looks like we're just collecting money and sticking it in the bank. When, you know, if we have to borrow money for this, if we have to borrow money and get matching grants or whatever, I mean, I was hoping we were going to do that in the immediate future, and that we could see something happening.
I think the potential, the potential is there to do that. I think failing to have a concrete plan, this just protects those funds and actually shows where those increases are being.
I guess what I want to see is money in the plan to do that.
Well, we haven't, we haven't got a budget yet for whatever it is we're planning to do there. This is taking the money from the increased marina rates. I believe that's where that's coming from, and then there may be other sources of funding for whatever project we decide, director of finance.
I was just going to suggest perhaps councillor Grant would like to suggest how much we should show as expenditures, and then just take these reserve contributions out and put the capital expenditures in.
Well, we don't know the expenditures at this time.
What happened to that fifteen thousand dollars we set aside for the walkway study? Is that in reserve somewhere, or did that?
No, there was no, there was no reserve for that. It just wasn't spent.
Just wasn't spent, so it just got lost in here then?
Yeah, you've got a surplus rolling forward from previous years.
It's in a one-point-five million dollar surplus.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I move, we, see, I just have no idea how much it's going to cost to get some planning done around that, so.
Well, we need, we need to get staff to, and council, to work on what it is that we're thinking about. We're looking at a budgetary process here. These contributions certainly could be used for the project. They could be used to support borrowing over time, of course, similar to what we did with the affordable housing reserve.
So where are we going to find about twenty-five thousand dollars to get planning?
I think CEO mentioned there's other planning funds available.
There are some, but as Don mentioned, we have the operating surplus, approximately one point five million. And if the intent is to clearly identify the financial plan, study funds, then I'd encourage you to make that into a form of motion.
And twenty-five thousand dollars enough, or do we need fifty thousand? I don't know.
I think, I think for the purposes of discussion, that number works, twenty-five thousand. And in the meantime, you can try and get some quick answers in terms of what, what the study with the preliminary high-level design would cost us.
So I move to put twenty-five thousand dollars in the financial plan this year for the study and design of the marina enhancement.
The community boardwalk.
Yeah. To do what we were calling.
That's I think what we called it.
Community boardwalk.
Community boardwalk, marina, boardwalk, community space. So that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes.
And so where will we find that in the budget when staff, well, probably somewhere.
Well, we put in on the expenditure side, and it'll.
I presume we would also remove these reserve contributions?
Well, we could, or we could leave those in. That's where the, I guess it depends, if we're funding that study, we'll only have ten thousand dollars right now out of the reserve to do so, right? Rather than this proposed reserve.
Yeah.
And the other fifteen would have to come from the surplus.
I guess for the purposes of the budget, you have to leave that in beyond 2012, right? But I mean, it may change if we decide that, I mean, let's say this project's going to cost four hundred thousand dollars, and staff can find two hundred thousand dollars from Ice Tea or somewhere else, or brownfield development, and we have to come up with two hundred thousand dollars ourselves. Well, then presumably we go to borrowing and use those marina fees that we raised, use that to amortize the debt.
Yeah, so having this in place essentially provides us with wiggle room in the future. Okay, gives you the financial capacity to do something like this. So we remove the ten thousand from this year, though?
I think you would, yes.
Because we're going to be spending.
We're not contributing it to reserve, correct? Okay. So that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
And just retired, so we're removing the ten thousand from the reserve, then that's what the motion is?
Yes.
And adding a twenty-five thousand dollar setting.
Planning and designing.
Yes.
And some process too. I think my difficulty with this conversation is that we really don't know what it is. And so it's really hard to talk about something that is. I mean, you have a very clear idea, Tom, but, you know, I, you know, I go. So that's the difficulty about talking about somebody that's in such a, you know, rudimentary state.
That's why we want to put money toward the study and design, and so give you something to make a decision on.
Yeah, and there would be public input into that process, of course. All right, any further on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, thanks for moving on to culture. Culture proposed moderate increases to nautical days, and then potential for a service contract to run the festival. Now, we did talk, I know CEO at a staff level about that being perhaps just a one-time amount, so it may not appear necessarily in 2013, 14, 15, and 16. But we may open for discussion on that. Plus, there are other cultural aspects of our budget that we need to bring forward for discussion.
So if that was a one-time thing?
The fifteen?
I was thinking, are you talking about contract services? Is that the one-time thing? So is that fifteen thousand?
That was what we approved, the council.
And that's for her, for one year to?
Yes.
And then what do we do in years after that?
Well, that would be up to council and staff to figure out what we do next. Whether we hire potentially a new coordinator or whatever, I don't know. There is amounts in the budget shown for ten thousand, I suppose that's to, I just consider that possibility. CEO, anything?
Well, that's, I was being a bit presumptuous in terms of, I recognize that council approved the expenditure for 2012, but just thinking ahead, this may be something that we require, but there's definitely no commitment, and this is, ten thousand can be removed from 2013 to 2016.
Well, I think our nautical days is growing big enough now that we probably need somebody to do this, so we don't run into, you know, we've said before.
Councillor Swift, I know you.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mayor Corland and his group have really provided a big service to the town in terms of growing the event, but I think that their retirement is unrealistic to expect somebody else to take it on on a voluntary basis. I mean, it's the signature of that for the town, and I think some monies are going to have to be devoted to it on a non-point basis.
Well, this is why we probably included that in there, and we can view those as is. Does there's any further? Now, councillor Pledge?
No, I quite agree with councillor Swift. I think that's, I think that will become a necessity. It's a big event, and it's a lot of coordinating there. Under the top part, cultural, it speaks to the grants to be allocated by council of forty thousand.
Yes.
Do we do that now?
Yes. So, yes, and that's the other part. And of course, we have other requests related to culture that are under our correspondence section. So I just ask at the moment that we vary the agenda to bring those forward.
So?
All three of those letters, that's the archives and museum societies, the civilians, and the business council. Those are all brought forward, and motion received those, please? Varied and received, and so, yes, forty thousand, and we're at the thirty of the budget. Or sixty of the agenda. And what we've done in the past, at the outset of the term. And what we've done in the past, at the outset of term, we had an amount of $40,000 that we've allocated, and we allocated that principally between Sid Williams Theater, Comox Valley Art Galleries, and Archives and Museum Society. And those amounts are shown, and other cultural aspects include other things, so.
And in fact, Your Worship, if you look at those three last year in the April, they were 42,500. Council varied them in the previous years, but did not change the allocation for '12 or '15.
Right, so we're looking at an allocation perhaps for the next three years. I know that some of those organizations would appreciate a three-year certainty, and I suppose that's all we can commit at this council table. So certainly open for discussion. Sid has asked for 20,000, Art Gallery, I believe, is still at five, Archives and Museum at 25, and we have the Music Business Conference, a request of either 5 or 10,000, depending on that, so, considered there. Open to motions, discussions on that allocation. Counselor Price?
Well, I think certainly that the Archives and the Art Gallery maintaining status quo at 25,500 is, I would like to see that happen. I'd also like to see it carried through the plan to give them some certainty when they go out of grant applications. It's, it's really important for them to be able to show that, that their budget has some uncertainty for some years.
Yes.
So I would like to move that Archives Museum and Art Gallery remain at 25,000 and 5,000 effectively throughout the plan.
You're talking about the full five years then?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion on that motion. So Archives and Museums, 25,000, and Seabag, which is Art Gallery, 5,000, two to five year of, financial, five years of the schedule. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all's a favor. Any opposed, motion's carried. So that deals with those. What's your pleasure on Sid Williams? Counselor Price?
My pleasure with the Sid Williams. Considering their request this year, they, they're looking for 20,000, we're at 12 presently, I'm, I'm wondering if we could consider maybe 15,000, one time only, considering that we are in June meeting to review the Recreation and Cultural Review Plan, and we could see how that would follow. My feeling with the Sid is certainly we know it's well-used by Comox citizens, and I would, I would want to have to build my own theater, and I think we get good value from the fact that they have.
So your motion is 15,000 for 2012.
Hold me along.
For 2012, and that's all.
2012 only.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Now you can discuss.
Okay.
So what happens after 2012? We go back to the 12, 5, or we just stop?
We would just leave it as to be allocated or to be determined.
And, and as I said, we are having a Recreation Cultural Review done, and we're looking at that in June, all the elected officials and the others, so maybe what'll come out of, I don't know what'll come out of that, but I just thought we just did this for one year and then see what comes out of that.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all's a favor. Any opposed, motion's carried. Any further on culture? We have the Music Business Conference funding request, due consideration. If there's no motions, then we'll just leave it at that, and we wanted to, fiscal services. So fiscal services, we've got some increases to contributions to Fire Department Reserve, as well as the Affordable Housing Reserve. And I think those are explained in page 25, reference to the fire trucks and so on, and the Affordable Housing, I mean, should be committed, so. Anything further on that? Okay, assuming nothing there, then we'll move on. So, now that's, of course, just dealing with the highlighted increases to core operations, and starting at page 31 of your agenda, which is page one of Financial Plan in detail, and that goes on for a number of pages. And at this time, if there's anything that members of council have to suggest in regards to those budgets running out to page 68 on your agenda, we can deal with them however easy we can. Just give me the reference points of the page, and then we can all be on the same page. And then we, my suggestion then to look at the capital plan. Give everyone a chance to go through their notes.
Chairman, the CAO, have you ever looked at our total cost of telephone and tried to see how we can bring that down? I mean, if you look at every different department, you've got thousands and thousands of dollars worth of phone, and, you know, in this day and age, now we have competition, you know, we can go to Shaw, you can beat the other guy down. So I'm just wondering, have we ever done an extensive review of all our phone bills or phone services?
We've, we've had a recent discussion regarding our mobile phone packages, but in terms of the landlines, no we haven't.
No, I, you know, I just look at every different department, you know, 6,000 here, 4,000 there, 5,000 here, and God, you add it all up, and it's a huge amount of money for, and telecommunications in this day and age are going down, 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 and we don't seem to be getting.
Well, it's an area that, that we'll look at in terms of what our commitment is or contract is, and see what, see what the options are.
Would you like a motion to add? That would be great.
I move that staff review our, our phone costs through, through all our departments.
Second, next.
On the report, and we'll come back to council.
I would, I would suggest that you look at your communication costs in general, i.e. computers sometimes, you're, like, there's more than just phone sometimes when you do that, right? So look at the whole package. Taxes could be a part of it, and commuter internet could be a part of that, too.
Well, we, I'll take that as a friendly amount.
I'll just, you can get, you can bundle, right?
Including taxes and internet, all kinds of things. All right, it's a friendly, then, all's a favor? Carry on. Yes?
I had a question from page 75 of the agenda, on the, 75 or 45 of the other agenda.
Are you in the capital plan?
Yes. Okay, let me jump ahead a bit.
Perhaps, I mean, I guess what I was, what we're suggesting, what I'm suggesting, I guess, is departmental budgets, if there's anything specific, go to those. Counselor Price?
I'm on page 45 of the agenda, how it works. I'm just wondering, under engineering studies, there were two line items, one says finish northeast, on, from a storm, it's been money budgeted, but nothing actually, I'm just wondering, just look at that.
That's what we talked about earlier this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And in fact, we've transferred that over to the planning budget, so if you turn to page, sorry, you've got to give me a second, page 50 of your agenda, you'll see that there's 19,200 for our consultants to referee, the developers for you, and $20,000 funding the expanded study area.
Thank you for that reference. And is that on that page, page 50, is that where the 25,000 for the wire return, community boardwalk thing?
I'd probably go to do the marina budget, because that's where the funding is coming from.
Okay, thank you. Anything further on the budget detail?
Just perhaps through the chair to staff on page 54 on the Rad Center, there's a line item cost for storage container rental, and I know it was our desire, there's lots of storage in that new facility, so we don't have to have containers, but it looks like we still have one.
Storage rental?
Storage container rental?
Oh, there you are, okay. I don't know, Director Recreation?
It was a periodic discussion around storage when we had the building planning at the start, and it was, we eventually decided at the end that we reduced the amount of storage in the new facility with saying that it's cheaper to rent the storage than to build the additional space we needed to provide required storage. We will be going through that storage unit in the near time, probably June, July, see if we can somehow accommodate everything that's in it, and then get rid of it, at this point, unless to, to try and reboot it if we can. But at present, I, of course, still have a four.
James. Anything further on budget detail? So if there's nothing further on budget detail, I'd like to suggest that we vary the agenda again, and that we bring the fire and service rescue agreement forward, and then we can come back to the capital plan.
Move.
Second, Recreation, all's a favor? Okay. And then on the, the recommendation on that is that it be renewed for a one-year period?
Move that.
Any further discussion? Our fire chief is here, yes, Counselor Price?
The Chair, the Chair, so, put this mutual aid, if you can, CFP come up, if they're not a part of it, or how do you, do they get in?
Through the Chair, CFP Comox, we do have a old longstanding agreement with them, but because of their legal issues, and it's very difficult for them to sign agreements, it's taken many years for them to get on side with this, we feel it would be as much of a damage to them as it is to us to sign the, send it to what they call their gag an hour and a half years ago, and it still hasn't come back. They changed, changed our chief's other volunteer, and the fire chief always says he'll get a dozen years, but he hasn't, so. We do have a bit of a gentleman understanding with them in the meantime, we'll always do.
Great. Okay, any further on that? All in favor? Any opposed, motion's carried. So we're now at the capital plan, and I would also like to suggest we take a two-minute, three-minute recess here, and freshen our art classes, and get down to the nuts and bolts of the capital plan. A little motion to adjourn, please.
Move.
All's a favor? That's good.
Did you do the master of the press?
Uh, no, sorry, for the background, actually. All right, so come back at, XO5.
I think one part.
Going to do business.
Somebody's seen it, yeah.
What's that?
I have a meeting at seven o'clock.
You know, two hours, they got free.
I hope you're home.
My lawyer.
My lawyer.
I just got the phone call.
Four days long.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, exactly.
So it's random, is it?
Yeah, like he was pretty friendly, because it's all.
I mean, he decides for you.
Yeah.
He's very, very straight.
I mean, recently, he's been.
Yeah.
I know, but I knew it.
Yeah.
I wish we might have got an eye back to motion, and I think it's a lot of, wow.
So I just go, I like, I don't know.
I have never, I'm tired of having to.
We almost always said, nobody fucking.
I think that's what I, yeah.
Is there?
Check with Todd.
Is there?
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 Alright, so we've had some good discussions on our core operations, our proposed leases to same. We made some adjustments in the leasing costs as well as security controls or other reductions to achieve some savings there. We've increased our cap, our cultural contribution by five thousand in terms of over the forty that was previously allocated. And we made a motion around a planning study, a design for the waterfront, which we can fund in part through surplus and through the marine rating fees. So really where we've got to tackle, I guess the current shortfall across the financial plan is in the capital budget. And starting at pages sixty-nine on your agenda, we have the capital expenditure plans incorporating entail for each of twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, twenty-seventeen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen. Now, staff have put on there the transportation study items outlined in that Olivera group study for the first five years, although some of them are deferred out to twenty-seventeen and eighteen. And they've identified those as the designation new. So you can see what, for the most part, I believe those are from that study. And it's up to council, obviously, to look at that in context with the financial plan. Desire to keep taxes reasonable is identified in their strategic plan and as well the other strategic planning items, some of which we dealt with already in the operations. So in the past, we've certainly gone year by year and asked questions, made comments, made changes on the capital plan. That's one approach, there would be a more overall approach. I guess, really, quite frankly, and when I looked at this budget, I said to myself, well, we have some very, very tough choices to make. We want to keep up with our infrastructure and we certainly have a report that suggests what we have to do to do so. But we also have to keep the taxes reasonable. And I know other communities are addressing this issue. Some have put that in their financial planning such that, for example, Sannich shows a tax increase for operations as one percentage and then a tax increase for infrastructure as another percentage. So that may be something that we consider. And I know staff are looking at different ways of communicating the fund results in this financial plan included. So with that, we'll open it up for discussion and how you wish to proceed. And of course, our Director of Finance is here to, along with his town engineer and CAO, to answer any questions or make any further comments.
Alright, well, I would go back to my original thought process that I had early on.
Right.
In the...
Twenty fifteen?
Twenty, is it twenty fifteen? Were we just talking about the year?
I believe it was, yes.
Twenty fifteen, now, Tom had suggested that maybe that was a project that we would like to keep. So if we went to twenty sixteen and looked at that, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars...
Sidewalks on Rob?
Yes, sidewalks on Rob. I would suggest that we take that off the plan or move it, move it off the plan. And then if our gas tax gets renewed, we can put it back in. I would also suggest that we could probably find in our list, and I was just looking for mine and I can't find it, the edge of this gas tax money expenditures, that if we do leave the one in twenty fifteen, which is the Beaufort-Jane Place one in the plan, that we find an area in that other gas tax to make up for that. And I think we could probably do that.
Okay, so your motion at this point is...
So my motion for now would be the twenty sixteen and take the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty out of the plan, knowing that if we get gas tax money back, that we will put it back in.
So to take it out of the plan, basically defer it past twenty sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, so that's removed and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Comments from our city engineer, town engineer?
I would just quickly recommend is that sort of goes, that sidewalk goes with the major road upgrading as well as widening, widening in that road for the sidewalk through the bike lanes. So maybe it should go as sort of a project?
Oh, just above there, that's...
Really not cost effective to go back and tap that, because then you have to rip out some of what you've already bought, right? Lose, keep it better and other things, so.
So you're removing anything referenced there on Rob regarding the resurfacing, the widening and this like...
So I would take Shelley's friendly amendment there.
Okay, so those three items or three amounts, sorry, and items would be removed from the financial plan. Of course, by doing so, that doesn't mean that we forget about them.
Well, that's, that's... Could I suggest we move them to twenty seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, so we defer for one year to twenty seventeen. And of course, we can look at it again in twenty fifteen as opposed, for those of us that are here, and we'll hopefully have a replacement for the gas tax. Okay, so motion to defer all that for one year. And that's been moved and seconded. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all's a favor. Motion's carried.
So then I'd like to have discussion then on the two thousand, on page seventy-nine, is it seventy-nine? No, sorry, I'm going the wrong way.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, where we had the two hundred and eighteen thousand. And see if we could find in our list there some projects that we could trade over and put that one... Put that one in and get rid of some others.
I'm sure our town engineer would point this out, but there's also a major road work that we've got as well. So there's, but that, that road work would not be eligible for... Well, bike lane, but not for resurfacing. Yes?
The reason that we didn't use gas tax, didn't show gas tax money being used for this is that the project, the gas tax fund, community works fund, the funds have to be expanded under the current life of the upper plan by March twenty fifteen. So it would be unlikely that you'd be building sidewalks and roads and generators with March, right? If there's something in the plan for twenty fifteen, then it's likely going to be built in the summer construction season. And that'd be too late to use the gas tax money. So you have two options. One option is to move it forward, move the roadworks and the sidewalk forward to twenty fifteen, thirteen, twelve. The other option, of course, is to, we could budget it as if there were gas taxes and we certainly do hope that the program will be renewed. So there's nothing stopping you from budgeting it and showing it from, from gas taxes. That's more aggressive than I would like, but is that your discretion? And you would do so knowing that there may or may not be actual funds available even twenty fifteen.
Okay, so and from a timing point of view, I mean, moving things out a year is probably not as big a deal as moving things up a year in terms of capacity and in terms of other projects. So if we did move it up, how would that be addressed? You'd have to move something else to a different time?
Shelley, in terms of finances, I think I can figure out how to handle it. So then the question becomes in terms of her construction schedule.
Yeah, so we're going to move the twenty sixteen to move the Rob Road sidewalks widening. That's almost a one point seven million dollar project that was going to happen that year. So if we move that to twenty seventeen, what one would you want to replace in twenty sixteen? You know, move something forward into that so that, what I was trying to do is keep every year sort of within that same budget.
Over three years though, the twenty twelve, thirteen and fourteen, looks to me that fourteen is the lightest year in terms of your activity about.
Yeah.
So would you prefer to move, if we're going to try and advance this project from twenty fifteen, would you prefer twenty fourteen?
Well, and then, Councilor Tom Grant's point earlier was that that's a heavily used area. I've heard, I'm sure all of us have heard comment on why is there sidewalk and so on and so forth. Would tie in nicely with a downtown, of course, revitalization and so on and so forth, so.
The other issue, of course, though, is that all of our sewer lines are headed in that direction, right? So ultimately, we have to have figured out that, that the capacity of a long Beaufort to Jane is sufficient, right? If we, if we, if we go ahead and build this in twenty twelve and then do our study of...
I was suggesting twenty fourteen.
Yeah, but I'm just being hypothetically, if we push it up too far, then we run the risk that we'll have to dig it up in, in two or three years to get capacity for infill development.
Which we sort of discussed earlier with Marvin's planning, the utility, you know, how that infill is going to work downtown in that core, so once that, you kind of have, you know, once that happens first, then we can follow and see. The projects that I've kind of put in are knowing that there's going to be no infrastructure upgrades underground. So if we're going to look down on the core, then this should follow, then we'll follow the studies that we...
Oh, I agree with that, so but moving it up one year to twenty fourteen, is that achievable?
Yep.
Does that meet with, and then that makes it eligible for gas tax funding, portion of it anyway? Because we'll put gas tax money at that time? And the alternative is just to leave it as is and hope that we get gas tax money?
You know, I prefer to move it up and, and I think it's a, it's a pretty vital linkage that we're trying to do.
Absolutely. So is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion to that effect, because I don't know what you said.
Moving the, up for here. Moving a project from twenty fifteen, which is Beaufort-Jane Sturbe, surface widen a bike lane and sidewalks to twenty fourteen.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
And Marvin, your study will be completed by then?
Will be completed this year. And there's a second, sorry? Thank you. And any further discussion? Coming on, all's a favor. So move one up, move one out. Other comments, concerns, I mean, we can deal with the allocation aspects as well, but excuse me, I think we should probably look at other projects as well, like perhaps people want those or give a different priority before we get to the allocation. And the allocations actually can be done subsequent to all of the same either. So twenty twelve, is there some comments? Yes, that's a question.
Sidewalk, come on, we have Pritchard Orchard Park, it's the Philberg frontage. And I recognize that, again, that's being tied into some resurfacing work as well. That area just seems to be such a, it's a parking space almost for the, for the Philberg so often when they have events. But there's a sidewalk in there, I'm just...
Since the south side of Pritchard, Pritchard Stewart.
Pritchard Orchard Park. So it's fronting the, the Philberg grounds where, where we often see people parking and going to that.
I will turn this over to our town engineer, Frau.
Yeah, because I think right now with the current sidewalk, it just starts where that entrance is going to, into and out of Philberg. So extending it just gives them that frontage, which is recommended in the transportation study as sort of the road resurfacing. But, I mean, it's a good point, people are just going into it, depending on if they're coming from town into the Philberg, then that's just kind of, that's probably why the sidewalk ended there. But there is enough room that we can extend it to Orchard Park as well, so.
Your questioning, I guess, Councilwoman Fletcher, the need for a second?
Yeah, of course, there's always a need, but I think what might compromise the Philberg is parking. I mean, it, that becomes a hard curb and gutter, then are people going to be able to park there? It feels quite narrow.
It won't take away from the road width, the sidewalk could be addition, so if the parking's there, parking could stay there as well.
Okay.
Just a quick question on that too. How would that affect the hedge, does that beautiful hedge? Because at the moment, it's just the grassy verge, isn't it?
Yeah, and like I said, we didn't really do any type of surveying at this point, it was just sort of a preliminary. But just going out to the field and having a look, it looks like everything, it should accommodate it without moving that hedge, because that definitely was something that we thought of as well, we didn't want to have to relocate that. And there's power poles there as well, but I'm thinking just from looking at it quickly and going out, that looks like it should accommodate.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, yes? Councilwoman Fletcher?
Just so I'm clear, the people that park on there don't actually park on the road, but they can pull up onto the grass. So the impact, there would be an impact to the parking, because they wouldn't be able to park on the road. Am I seeing this pattern?
Yeah, I think there's, I think there should be, I think the road width is there that they could accommodate the parking. I would have to kind of, you know, take that into effect, into account and look at it a little bit in more detail. But I don't see it taking away the parking, putting in the sidewalk with the curving there. So just sort of wrap it around, so if people do park there, I mean, I think they're walking along just on the grass as well because of the hedge and trying to get into the entrance, so establishing that sidewalk is just good.
Alright, Councilor Pratt?
Yeah, just looking in the two thousand and twelve budget, we have ninety thousand dollars in community works funds for bike lane painting. And over the last three years, at least, we've spent well over a million dollars on bike lanes. And I think the other thing that we've done is we've really neglected some sidewalks and connectivity of sidewalks. And I think in our strategic plan, we talk more about connectivity of sidewalks than we did about bicycle lanes. So I'm wondering if we can't move some sidewalk projects and connectivity up into the budget for two thousand and twelve and push those bike lanes off into the future or... You know, I, I just believe we've spent a lot of money on bike lanes and it's about time we started spending some of this gas tax money on, on the pedestrians for connectivity.
Councilor?
Yeah, so now I'm, I'm a little bit unclear when we move that one sidewalk up to two thousand and fourteen. We didn't actually talk about how we were going to allocate that or fund it, other than it was going to come from gas tax, but we still have to find it in this money here, do you not? Am I correct with that?
Once, once the financial plan has been revised, as we're getting here tonight, then staff will come back with a revised allocation.
So that was one that I looked at too and thought, you know, we did, we did do a lot of that work and that may, may be a way to fund part of what we did on that one. So that was just a...
Certainly open, open for discussion, that has been identified as part of our transportation study, these routes, Anderson Road, Beaufort, Rodalua Ellis and Bolt, Julie, they can all identify as bike routes. And at this point, I don't believe they have any markings on them at all. And certainly, people have appreciated the markings on other roads. And yes, of course, we have to balance that with sidewalks and other connectivities. Sure. So, I mean, this is identified as part of the first five years, I believe, out of the transportation study, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. And if you look at page seventeen, you'll see that we get over two kilometers of bike, shared bike lanes marked. Now, that's measuring both sides of the road, so cut that in half, really, right? But you get thirteen hundred ninety-five meters of Anderson, two hundred seventy-seven on Bolt and seven hundred fourteen on Beaufort. So potentially, if we, we secure space for bicycles along some pretty important routes at fairly normal cost.
Councilor, a question?
Yeah, and this is the, the white line, is it with the, with the symbol?
Yeah, this isn't a conflict marking that she saw on Comox Avenue and... Yeah, this isn't a conflict marking that she saw on Comox Avenue and Guthrie. Those are pretty expensive.
So this is just the basic separation of vehicular road from bicycle or...
No, physical separation, not wide.
No, but by demarcating the line, yeah.
Yes?
How many feet of sidewalk can we build with $90,000?
Sidewalk, cost of sidewalk is about $1,000 a year. On average, depending on, you know, width change, 300 chili could be 1.65 meter, you know, depending, but, you know, a safe amount would save $1,000 a meter for a sidewalk.
Sidewalk curving gutter?
Yeah.
Well, I just think, you know, we talked about it in our strategic plan, about the connectivity of our sidewalks and that, and I think this money would be... I'm not saying it's going to be better spent, but it's more in keeping with our strategic plan, and it's also recognizing that we have pedestrians in this town whose safety is important to us as well. We spent millions on bikes, let's start working on some sidewalks. We talked about it in our strategic plan, let's put some action to it. So I move, we take that $90,000 out of the bike lane painting and put it into sidewalks for 2012 budget.
I'll second that.
And which project would we be adding?
Well, I would look to staff, based on the Boulevard report.
Okay, so a motion to remove it from the budget at this point, part of the capital plan.
And come back with the recommendation for sidewalks.
We'll see if it passes. So that's my movement seconded, and then we'll... Discussion. Counselor?
Yeah, I'd like staff to report back and tell me how much sidewalks you could, how much bang for our buck we can get there.
Ninety meters.
Ninety meters.
Yeah.
Just 90 meters.
Just give that some thought and weigh it.
Well, I think that's, yeah, that's about 300 feet of sidewalk, and obviously, there's bike lanes.
The other thing that, just to keep them, like, it's hard to compare apples to apples. If you're going to put in a sidewalk, you want to put it in the ultimate location, right? So it might look at widening the road as well and resurfacing. So if you're going to go and put a sidewalk, you want to do it so that'll increase the cost as well or add to that project.
And that's why I didn't bring specific projects forward, because, you know, yeah, but, you know, what could we, where could we use that money for connectivity, like...
Director Vance?
The Boulevard study identifies four sidewalks, one on Bofort, we talked about it. Anderton, Guthrie, and Bolt is in 2017 in the financial plan. Now, it's 418 meters long, and the estimated cost is $300,296.78. Guthrie is in 2014, and Rob, what we've already talked about, Rob has been deferred. So the logical one to suggest, it's more than the line painting, but it would be the Anderton that's been tagged for 2017. Bring that forward.
That cost is $300,000?
Yes, roughly speaking.
Plus the roadways.
Actually, I don't think they're road, oh, yes.
They separated, yeah.
They separated.
Yeah.
I guess the question is here, I mean, these don't necessarily have to be mutually exclusive. What I'm saying is that whatever we decide here in the capital plan, staff will come back to us with the allocations that reflect that. And, you know, we moved that one project up to 2014, which will make it eligible for gas tax. It doesn't necessarily mean, in the final analysis, that we don't have gas tax money to do these things. And it's hard for me to do the math at this point. Removing this bike lane painting, I think, is not necessary. I believe it's part of the transportation study, and I think it is useful, and I do understand that we have to do the sidewalks as well, and we obviously would like to do it all, maybe we can't, but, I mean, if we make some further revisions, I would ask, I would think that staff would bring back an updated allocation and then see where we're short or not, because we may not have to remove things. Wishful thinking, I know. Like, in principle, I can't support the resolutions, as I say. Because I think it's a desirable thing to have, and I know we can't do it all, but that's one that I think is important.
Yes, and I, too, cannot support it. When you look at the road's name, particularly Anderton Road, very busy roads, and, you know, one of the things, for a whole variety of reasons, for, I'm trying to think of the words, you know, the greenhouse gas stuff. We are trying to encourage more and more people, families, children, to get off, get out of their cars and to get on their bikes. And, you know, on these major roads, it's a real safety issue, and that we are getting to over nearly 2,400 meters at a relatively reasonable cost. I would be reluctant to see that go.
My point was that I understand that bike lanes are important, but we have spent million, well, over a million dollars on bike lanes in the last three years. And if you look at the amount of money that we have gotten for sidewalks, it's pathetic. And we have got a huge constituency out there who walk, and that reduces greenhouse gas emissions, too. And so I'm just saying, let's have some recognition that we do have pedestrians as well, and let's put some money into the, into some sidewalks instead of putting off... We have spent a lot of money on bicycling, so I know they're important, and we've put a lot of money toward them and, you know, to show how important we believe they are. But let's start taking care of some of our pedestrians as well.
In the first three years of this capital plan for sidewalks, there have been a number identified, some deferred, of course. The gas tax funding certainly is assistance to us. The bike lanes that we did build were cost shared to a large extent with the provincial government, the programs that are no longer available. The bike lane painting, obviously, is one that we're trying to get done for a relatively nominal cost. So, and I think we're paying attention to all aspects of it, and I don't know if staff have any further comments on the allocation issue. I mean, I think that you could come back with that allocation list revised and see where we're at.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we don't have to cover it all. And of course, remember that we haven't really dealt with the rescinding of the garbage in the... What was the other one, sir?
Sure.
So anyway, I don't know if there's any further discussion on the motion to remove that bike lane? Yes?
Just for point of clarification, the bike lane probably exists, we're just talking about the paint.
There's no demarcation on those roads. There's, I assume, sufficient width for a bike lane, and you're talking about painting it?
Yeah, most of these, the ones that were listed through Boulevard are what, like, Council Place is saying, but the road widths are there, it's just to increase, you know, improve safety. Anderton's looked at, you know, a lot of people speeding, so more, you know, pedestrian and cycling on there would maybe reduce that as well and promote alternative transportation as well. But we looked at it being not an easy implementation, it's putting in the paint lines and signage and that type of thing, that there was no major infrastructure that needed to be done to get that to resource and place.
And from a historical perspective, since I've been on council, I know it's significant some have gone into sidewalks all the way down Pritchard as part of the Pritchard rebuild, one side of Anderton as part of the stern grain works there, and so it's always going to focus on Guthrie, you know, Highland School, lots of sidewalk work has been done, and we'll continue to do that. We're not neglecting one or the other. Again, I don't view them as mutually exclusive.
While we're not mutually exclusive, I would suggest that more people in this town will use either scooters, push their strollers and buggies, or pedestrians and riders, so...
Yeah, I don't think that's questionable, really, but what I guess I'm saying is that if you look at the, over time, the ten years I've been on council, a lot of money's gone into sidewalks and roads, and I guess more can always go into it. But in relative terms, the amount of money that we've put there for bike lanes and markings has been relatively small, that we've funded in relation to those other things, and that's just historical. So certainly, it's an important aspect, and I think our sidewalk network is currently very good. We've obviously got some more work to do in certain areas, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not that bad compared to the fact that, you know, we don't have... I mean, we've had some more success with bike lane projects in the last few years. On a blank board basis, it's been identified in the Boulevard Transportation Study as something to, for a relatively nominal cost to achieve some great success. Are you ready for the question?
The motion was to remove that from the...
From the financial plan, yes.
And allocate it to sidewalks?
Yes.
Not to remove it, but to allocate it?
Well, to remove the bike lane painting item and then reallocate that to the sidewalk account. That amount of $90,045, okay. All right, you ready for the question?
More than that.
I think you're ready. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion stated. All right, the other capital aspects, go ahead, Counselor Fletcher.
I'm still back on page 69 on 2012, and I'm struggling with this sidewalk issue on Philberg, and I recognize there's roadworks there, too. And it's designated for 2012. I have concerns about that work being done, how it might impact Philberg. I personally see that as nice green space and complements the Philberg, so I'm wondering if you could...
You're talking about the 102,000?
Yeah, so it's 102,000 community works for the sidewalk. I don't know how integral the roadwork is to that, but I'd like to see those at least moved so that the Philberg Board can be well advised and aware and have some conversation or get into it.
All right, that's staff?
But I'm looking for staffs.
So is the intent?
If I can look into the impact and see how that would impact any type of parking and the greenway and trees, and then report back to council.
The Comox Ave itself has to be resurfaced.
Yes.
That's what they have, right?
Yeah, that's it.
And then the sidewalk is usually done as part of that.
It's just a matter of putting in the sidewalk and curving gutter at the same time, yeah.
That's our standard to rebuild to.
But what I was hoping to move it maybe to another year, and the impact I'm also thinking about is on their events, you know? There's obviously going to be a time where there's going to be works, and I know they have events planned for this year, so I'm not sure with the timing, how that all fits. I'd just like to see it moved over to years so that they could have some opportunity to recognize it, be aware of it.
Okay. Director Vanny?
I recognize that we've moved the Bofort project from 2015 to 2014, but 2013 has a lot of neighborhood roads in it, so I'm really wary of allowing on to 2013. If we defer it, I think it might make more sense to defer to 2014.
Okay. So, Town Attorney, is there, I mean, assuming it stayed in this year's plan, if it stayed in 2012, what would the timing of that kind of project be, and how would that...
Argument over.
Well, we'll definitely try to plan it around and have the least impact, especially we try to get things done, obviously, in the summer months. So we can just work with the coordinator and see how, you know...
So it would be done after the Philberg?
Or after. If we can get a project done by the end of September, obviously, it all depends on the weather, but that's what we like to aim for, just so you're not predicting what the weather's going to happen in the middle of construction, so...
You know it.
At least that's not an area, like, you know, working on Guthrie Road, we're looking, you know, making sure you're getting it done before school starts again, but in that particular area, I think that's a local road that we would be fine.
Yeah, I understand the sensitivity to the needs of the Philberg, but we also have the needs of the town to maintain these roads.
Yeah, it's one of those, it's not ever going to get, you know, next year, we'll still have the same problem, right? So it's just a matter of working with authorities and trying to have the least impact.
That's a question.
Would it be that onerous or difficult if we switched the Jane Street and brought the Jane Street one forward to 2012 and then put the Comox Ave one into the 2014?
Again, Your Worship, we may have, we may have potential for sanitary sewer upgrades because everything comes down to Jane Street along Bofort, right? So until we do our capacity study, we will not know where the bottlenecks are in the system. And so if we have to do, restore our sanitary sewer works on Bofort, we don't want to be putting in works this year and then digging up next.
Counselor, a question.
Yes, is there another one that we should move? I must admit, I share Counselor Fletcher's concern that it would be good to hear back from people on that. It is a very attractive area with the grass and the hedge, and I certainly know the hedge is sacrosanct, and there was a move in the past to alter any of it, there was definitely a lot of strong feeling. So before we went ahead on that project, I would certainly, 30 years back, would certainly fund the, from the Philberg Board and fund the community, because it is a very attractive type of town.
What we're dealing with here is a budget item. As to how it gets carried out and implemented is going to be a staff issue, and the sensitivities around it, I think, would have to be respected. And if any project goes for it, whether it's in this neighborhood or another neighborhood, and I know there's special considerations here, what we're being asked to do is approve, at least in draft, anyway, a budget allocation for that project, which is demonstrated as needed in the plan, in the study, sorry. And the sidewalk is obviously an important aspect of any time you do new road surface. You know, I don't think there's anything untoward about keeping it there if it needs to be done, and it can't properly be done or likely be done in subsequent years, it's obviously a priority. And we would have to leave it with staff to work through if it's approved, or if it's easy to budget.
And make a motion to remove the sidewalk from Pritchard Orchard Park.
I'll second that.
Move it entirely from the plan?
Yes. And I don't see it in the transportation study, I don't see it in year 05 on page 17.
Okay, City Engineer or Town Attorney, any other thoughts?
It was just sort of, we saw that it was, it was missed, and we figured we're going to go in here and do some resurfacing so that, we wanted to put in as much pedestrian, you know, sidewalks as, I think, council previously stated, so we thought that got missed and suggested putting in there at the same time as the resurfacing of the road there, so...
All right, thank you for that. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing now, those in favor? For those opposed? Opposed? Uh, motion's good. All right.
So now we've got that money, 102,000, can we now allocate that back into sidewalk projects?
It's in sidewalks already, so I would imagine it would stay there and staff...
I just want to be sure that that's...
Staff will come back with a reallocation once we've finished all this, and they'll try to make it work as best as we can. If we do have a shortfall in gas tax money, the less...
Okay.
Thank you for that. 2012, anything further? Yes?
In 2013, we have, under gas tax money, we have, Rob Road is being widened for a bike lane from Davis to Condor. For 40... bike lane from Davis to Condor. For $40,000, I just, I don't know that you're getting such a great deal. It's a quiet little area. There's a park there as well. I think through the park compromised.
Conder Park, yeah.
Certainly, I support bike infrastructure, but I don't recognize that as something that is going to get us the best bang for our buck, and $40,000, maybe it could be better spent elsewhere in the gas tax.
Okay. Any further comments on that from our...
Seconded?
No, seconded.
Any further comments from anyone, county engineer?
Go ahead.
The motion is, Councilwoman Fletcher and Councilor Grant, to remove the $40,468 from the 2013 capital expenditure for the Rob widening and bike lane. The Rob's resurfacing is still intact. Okay? Anything further? Seeing no, those in favor? Motion's carried. Those will be fine.
Yeah, I was going to do that one, but I got so tired of losing on bikes, I didn't bring it up.
Anything further from any members of council? If not, then staff will come back with the revision, along with the other revisions, and see where we got to in two weeks' time.
And I'd just like to renew my thoughts earlier on when I said that I thought with the roadworks and some of the, some of the significant work that we've got in here, that we try and keep this budget as close to two or two and a half percent as we could. And I don't know if I'm alone in that. I know that the basic idea here is we're looking probably closer to a 4% budget before all the changes we made. I don't know what impact these are going to have, but I guess, you know, I've said, and I don't know what everybody else is thinking on that, and I think we should probably give staff some direction as to where we'd like to see that, if we can figure it out.
Well, that would be helpful. I don't believe that the changes we made would get it down to two and a half percent, but that's just my math. And it may be more, in the order of three and a half, but, so we, I guess, we have two choices here. We can direct staff to bring in a budget at a certain percentage, and then certain things would fall out of this plan in terms of capital, principally on the expect. And alternatively, if it's not 2.5, what is it? City County came down with a budget of 3.75 and it's a draft. City County River is at 13.7, for different circumstances. Other communities are in the three to four range, so. And it will be important, I think, for communication purposes to demonstrate where the money is going. If we are going to try to tackle the transportation works and the infrastructure required there, then that's a very important communications. And we need to consider how we present it. We don't have to necessarily set an amount today, but that would certainly be open to council's directions now. And, you know, I was hoping as well somewhere in the two to three percent range, but we may not get there.
That sounds fair, that's not...
So we'll see, wait, see who comes back. So, staff will have to come back and tell us how close we've gotten, and then we'll have to really get down to if we want to get below three.
That's what we're going to do.
Yeah. Again, it's a building block process, and I want to thank staff and council for their comments this evening, and it's a work in progress, and we're all trying to do what we can to make a reason. So, I believe, in terms of the agenda that deals with it for now, other than we do have an entire meeting to deal with a couple of items and motion to adjourn to in front of, after we still have public. Thank you. Those in favor? Motion's carried.